So there was no, little or no, as far as I could tell, vertical articulation from one grade to another of how we're assessing our students. And so I asked at the time Suzanne Ackley to put this chart together, and it was recently updated by Jennifer Knapp. The last two pages, or actually the last three pages of the document show you a tally of the number of minutes we spend assessing students. This is aside from whatever projects or formative assessments, quizzes, homework assignments teachers incorporate in their program. So these minutes include standardized tests, benchmarks that we include, everything that's on the chart.
That is stunning.
Laid out. I'm going to clarify what some of these things are. You're probably wondering what PAR is and concepts of print and whatnot, so I'm going to take a few minutes to describe these assessments. And by the way, I'm timing the update to the board of this chart with this chart because we are heading into June 13th, day of forums with the Department of Education as we discuss the future of PAR. So the Board President and I thought it would be timely for me to share this information.
And this is so much more fleshed out than what we've seen in the past. This is remarkably helpful.
Yeah, I thank the supervising team for...
No, they did a great job. This is like, I remember seeing this like last time we did it and kind of feeling like, oh, we're not, it's not quite, you know? I mean, it was a good start, but it wasn't quite there. But this is like fully fleshed out. This is, I'm thrilled that we have this to give to the DOE, to just say, look at how much we have to test our kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, SGO, so some, and we noted this, some assessments that you're not accustomed to hearing about, like the student growth objective, SGO, are still state mandated.
I'm married to a teacher, I'm accustomed to it. I said, I'm married to a teacher, I'm accustomed to it.
But let me just clarify some of the assessment strategies we use because we feel it's important to get a read on kids and inform instruction, which is the main purpose of assessment. It's to inform how we teach, how we individualize instruction. Concepts of print, which is a tool we use in the lower grades at Irving, is mostly conducted via teacher observation. So the teacher will walk around with a rubric and while kids are attempting to read to themselves or talking about their picture books, the teacher will walk around and for each student, note progress, if there's any. So we're not actually pulling students, they're not actually being assessed. It's also, it's mostly based on qualitative data collection, observation data collection. And the intent is to check students readiness for early reading and book handling skills, everything from how to actually hold a book, turn pages, so you can see concepts of print, something we incorporate at the kindergarten level.
So do we assume from this that there's no formal assessment of any kind in pre-K?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And one reason for that is because we don't, we get a hodgepodge of students into pre-K and the first time we actually see all of our students is in kindergarten. Good question. The letter sound recognition assessment, it's also a Heinemann product, assesses students' ability to recognize letters of the alphabet, both lowercase and uppercase. So the teacher will, in this case, pull a student during reading workshop time or time when the kids are in literacy centers, so they're doing their own work, self-guided. Teacher will pull a student and record responses to prompts that the teacher's providing. The writing prompt is something that we try to weave throughout all of our elementary classes, K-5. It's administered whole group, and this assesses the students' writing abilities for content, grammar, mechanics, and spelling. We use a common grade level rubric, so the teachers do get together and decide on what the expectations will be for outcomes. All of this information, by the way, is being placed in Genesis. Christina Nikosia helped to carve out a portal, what we call a portal, a tab in Genesis, that a teacher can click and see his or her previous, her current student's previous assessment data to get a read on readiness and what are, what kind of foundational skills the student might not be bringing to that next grade level. We've never done that before, it's the first time. We can tell that we've digitally stored all that information. It's in Genesis. Only the teachers of the current year's students have access to that information. We could talk about making that accessible to parents at some point, too. Right now, parents can see report card grades, progress reports, but they don't see all of these, all of this detail. It's my expectation that teachers are going to present a lot of this data at the parent conference. I mean, ideal parent conference as a parent, meeting with the teacher, getting to know the teacher, especially at the lower grades, and the teacher laying all this formative assessment data to show growth or need. The Fattis-Pennell assessments are similar to what some around the table might know as running records. At kindergarten, first, second grade level, it might take a teacher 20 to 25 minutes to work with the student at the crest-shaped desk and how we'll have the student read if he or she is reading print. And the teacher then tabulates frequency of mistakes, ability to be fluent, also checks for comprehension. So the teacher will have prompts, it's all kind of packaged with the Fattis-Pennell program, will read prompts that have the student responding to comprehension-related questions. PAR is something, a tool we instituted, this year for the first time, we started the last year at the half-year point, as part of our dyslexia identification portfolio. Another common assessment similar to PAR is DIBELS. Some folks around the table who are educators or friends in other schools might have heard that term, that name come up before. PAR stands for predictive assessment of reading. The high-frequency word assessment is something that we give our kids when we have a chance to pull them, again during that literacy instruction time, that literacy center time. Students will be prompted to read from a list of sight words or common words. Now, at the end, by the end of first grade, Fattis-Pennell has something like 100 of these commonly used words, words like the and, you know, conjunctions. And this teacher will record the frequency of accuracy that the student's able to repeat back those words. Those are, that's also, by the way, what trick word lists are. May have wondered what that means. Trick word lists are also high-frequency words, they're just a different, a different set. So students will have trick words and they'll also have their sight words.
Well, probably words that can't be decoded, right?
Correct. Thank you for pointing that out. You'll notice as well that we incorporated words their way in our program, and this shouldn't be new information to the board. We discussed expanding foundations to words their way, which is all part of the Wilson approach to helping kids decode words. And the words, the words their way assessment is also done in small groups, so that's often done during the guided reading group time. Guided reading group time is when the teachers will pull aside small groups of students, usually grouped according to their ability, but not always. And it's an opportunity for the teacher to spend up to 30 minutes while the other kids are in self-directed activities in their literacy centers. So this is when the teacher will administer a words their way assessment. It's a lot, it's almost akin to a spelling test. It's an opportunity for the teacher to determine if the kids are properly decoding words that she prompts them to spell.
So are you in second grade now? Is that where you are?
Correct.
Because I don't, so that's the first time that words their way is used?
Yes. So foundations is the K-1 version of words their way, which starts in grade two.
Gotcha. And the PAR is what's used in first and second grade?
Correct.
Dyslexia screening. And then by second grade, the PAR is still used also? So for those three, because those are the three years that have to be screened?
State mandated, yes. And by state mandate, we're required to continue dyslexia screening through second grade.
Right, okay.
So I've given you an overview of what I think you probably had questions about regarding lower-grade assessments. When you move into the upper grades, at the middle school, we're still using MAP, Measures of Academic Progress. A reminder to the board, this is a computer-based adaptive assessment tool. By adaptive, I mean the test actually adjusts its complexity based on kids' answers. Teachers can come away with a sense of their reading levels, math, grade-level operations. There's also a set of skills that comes with the MAP package that a teacher can compare to the assessment results and then use to help remediate areas in math and language Sidebar about SGOs. Some teachers use SGO, use the existing benchmarks and formative assessments like words their way and Fattis-Pennell as their SGO. So the last page is when we total the number of minutes kids are being tested. We're being conservative and assuming that SGOs are two separate assessments, but in some cases, in fact, they're being wrapped into the other assessments. So a teacher might create a separate benchmark for his or her SGO homemade, but then use a writing prompt or words their way for the second SGO data collection method.
Can I make a suggestion? On the average testing times per grade level table, if we could add in an additional line to break it down between state mandated versus...
Great idea.
I think that will really help clarify it for our friends in the DOE.
Yeah, I like that. Now, you know, we could do it in both places, the test duration time chart? And the other chart.
Yeah. I mean, because even for the middle school, I mean, the MAP at this point, the middle school, I mean, I know you, we have debates about MAP and, but at this point, that's state mandated for the middle school.
That per RAC, which is now something else, I forget the name. We'll do that definitely in time for June 13th. So I think that gives you a good idea how much time we're spending with kids testing, what kinds of assessments we're incorporating. But if you have questions, feel free, if I can't answer them, a follow-up by email to the board.
Oh, and it's kind of on the test duration times, but it just needs to be broken out a little differently to make it a little clearer.
In which way?
Like, it would be really helpful to have it just added there, like, just really concretely. Like, it's nice that it's here, but...
For sure. All righty.
Regarding PAR and graduation. Are we proceeding as if we don't know that PAR is going to be discontinued or we have to do that, right? So what does that mean as far as kids who may be unsure about their status with graduation?
We have 13 students we're concerned about right now, who have plenty of time to do what we need them to do in order to graduate, unlike the situation in East Brunswick, I understand they have hundreds of students who are in this boat. So we're not, so Mr. Lasseter is not concerned, but we're still hoping and banking on the idea that we're not going to have to meet this graduation requirement. And I understand that the Ed Lawson Center wrote an op-ed piece in NJ Spotlight that calls for that to be eliminated.
So unmoved now, do you know? Not for a long time. There's, there's nothing that's going to immediately force a change, and with everybody fighting over school funding right now, it's kind of on the back burner.
But I can tell you that at my roundtable meeting last week, my colleagues were very upset. They're very upset about the lack of direct guidance we're getting from the Department of Education, mixed messages. So they're going to hear it from me on June 13th. On final note, speaking of roundtable, just a heads up, I was appointed president of the roundtable for Middlesex County, so I will represent Highland Park as best I can. All that means is I organize luncheons. I do, I'll tell you what I would like to see.
It's a nice title, though.
So Mercer County's Roundtable of Superintendents, that's the organization of superintendents around the county of Mercer, has done a really nice job leading the discussion on mental health and personal wellness. And I'd like to see us focus on that as well, so I anticipate trying to do more of that as a group, as a Middlesex roundtable. I will likely reach out to one of my friends in West Windsor, Dave Aderhold, see how we can collaborate with Mercer County.
That'd be great.
So that concludes my report.
Scott, could you elaborate on the meetings on the 13th here?
I'm going to under my president's report, yeah.
Thank you, Derek.
Yep. All right, well, we still don't have students.
They're at the Model UN conference, so they'll be here.
All right, so we'll just kind of keep going with our agenda, and when they get here, we will switch back to them. Although we don't have Michelle for Curriculum Instruction to give the committee report, and I believe, Scott, you said that she was the only one that was at the committee meeting, so we'll have to wait until next week for her committee report. But would anyone else from curriculum like to go through the agenda items? Who else is here? Anybody? No?
Yes, Rob. It's short.
I'll fill in the blanks.
Thank you. Trying to recall what I...
Or we could have Scott go through it.
Actually, it would be better if Scott did it.
Yeah, that's fine. And it's a brief report. Number three is about the relationship we're going to establish with King University that will allow our teachers discounted rates to participate in professional development around apartheid education and genocide slash Holocaust education. King University has a very well-known genocide education department, so Rebecca took the lead, Rebecca Fittipol took the lead on that, and this just formalizes our relationship with King. Number four speaks to the course approval forms that I placed in the board agenda. These are all courses that are going to be written by our GLO teachers for our GLO students. As our GLO program expands, we need to also help expand their post-secondary opportunities. So you'll notice that all of these courses have to do with getting kids out to the community and readying them for the workplace.
I'm noticing a lot more GLO stickers on businesses in town. It's really nice.
Yeah, that's exciting, isn't it?
Very exciting.
So as I'm sure the board knows, the community may not be aware, school districts are responsible for serving students who have IUPs until the age of 21. We have several older students who will continue to remain with us in our GLO program. So those kids will engage in these experiences almost all day, and our job coaches will be there to supervise. Number five is a resolution to have our internal handle with care training trainers, keep paying forward, train more of our paraprofessionals, and some of our teachers like Ed Hanks, our new media center teacher at Bartle. Number six is a resolution to support a free program, I shouldn't say it's voluntary, because the organization does pay, that's coming into have people work with our kids in small group workshops at the middle school. Timing is perfect, it's in the last week of school, close to the last week of school, the Friday before the last week. So our middle school was offered this opportunity, it came through, I think, Mrs. Osseby's office, and so she took the opportunity to jump on it. So the kids will be engaging in these workshops led by college-age and older students on various topics, and they're all listed on the agenda. And number seven, the final resolution on the curriculum agenda, just memorializes the dates of ESY this year, Senate School Year.
Okay. Is there, I didn't, I don't think there was anything in the, in our materials about the Jersey Cares.
I'll make sure you get it.
Okay. Yeah, like a little bit of information would be good. I mean, like recycling sounds fine and theater and whatever, but I can't for the life of me figure out what career jeopardy would be.
Yeah, well, actually, there's a program we can share with you, we'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
So it'll be up and ready tomorrow.
That'd be great.
And that's the curriculum agenda.
All right. Anybody have any questions about anything on the curriculum agenda? No? Okay. Mark, you want to go through the finance items for us?
Yes, I will. Thanks, Dorsey. So we had a short finance and facilities committee meeting before this session. A few things came out of it that are worth noting. So we did open proposals for substitute staffing services. We received two proposals, one from Source for Teachers, which we've been using, and another from a company called Insight. And our business administrator and staff will be reviewing the proposal. Proposals are making recommendations before, for our next meeting. This isn't one or the other, perhaps both, so we can use both services. There'll be, we reviewed a number of items that'll be on the agenda for next time that didn't make it to this agenda. There's another five or six or seven new items that didn't make it in time, but will be discussed next week. We went over the student enrollment report. Student enrollment is slightly down from last year. I think in 1,660 or so students, which is down seven from last year. It started the year lower, it always starts lower and then it always goes up, but it started quite a bit lower and has increased back up to the same levels we received last year. And a steady state is a good kind of thing for us. We don't want to go have too few students, but we certainly don't want to see hundreds and hundreds more students. It'd be hard to put them in classrooms. And then we reviewed very briefly projections of anticipated funds to carry over for next year, and we are slightly short, slightly lower than we anticipated, but the final numbers aren't in yet, and Linda will be discussing with that, that with us in the next meeting, and then in early July when we have, and August when we have better numbers. As for the agenda, items two and three are usual bill lists. Item four and five are federal submissions amended for funds. These are funds that were revised and are already spent or virtually spent, so we need to approve them. Item six is state, state funds, and again revising the grant amount and will be spent by year-end, same as the federal funds. Item seven is a resolution to approve the renewal of the grants submission for the state school-based youth services program for next year. Item eight is the application for extraordinary aid for the school year for special education costs exceeding, exceeding the standard thresholds. Item nine is sidebar agreement with the HPEA to add several Schedule B positions, stipend positions, for the 2019 and 2020 school years. And if you look at the very end of that page where it says now therefore be resolved that on this June day of, June 11th, 2018, the parties heretofore agree as follows, Schedule B of the agreement shall be revised to include the following stipends, and that should save 2018-19 and 2019-20 school years. So there was a typo on the page, it'll be fixed next week. Okay, I will go on. Item number, oh, and those, those are, by the way, Community Art Club at the middle school, Key Club at the high school, Red Cross Club at the high school, the Social Emotional Learning Lab at the Bartle School, the Book Club at the Bartle School, and the Environmental Club at the high school. So those are all new clubs covered by our stipend per our contract between the board and the HPEA. Item 10 are various professional services, in some cases funded by the contractor or educational services department. Item 11 is a new add of district placement at CPC High Point School in Morganville, New Jersey, effective 5/15/2018. Item 12 are extended school year placements for the summer, which total $261,894.01, which is a 10.8% increase from last year. So it's quite significant. Item 13 is our resolution to award the custodial grounds and management services in the district to...
next meeting, and then in early July when we have, and August when we have better numbers. As for the agenda, items two and three are usual bill lists. Item four and five are federal submissions amended for funds. These are funds that were revised and are already spent, or virtually spent, so we need to approve them. Item six is state, state funds, and again revising the grant amount and will be spent by year end, same as the federal funds. Item seven is a resolution to approve the renewal of the grants submission for the state school-based youth services program for next year. Item eight is the application for extraordinary aid for the school year for special education costs exceeding, exceeding the standard thresholds. Item nine is sidebar agreement with the HPEA to add several Schedule B positions, stipend positions, for the 2019 and 2020 school years. And if you look at the very end of that page where it says now therefore be resolved that on this June day of, June 11th, 2018, the parties heretofore agree as follows, Schedule B of the agreement shall be revised to include the following stipends, and that should save 2018-19 and 2019-20 school years. So there was a typo on the page. It'll be fixed next week. Okay, I will go on. Item number, oh, and those, those are, by the way, Community Art Club at the middle school, Key Club at the high school, Red Cross Club at the high school, the Social Emotional Learning Lab at the Bartle School, the Book Club at the Bartle School, and the Environmental Club at the high school. So those are all new clubs covered by our stipend per our contract between the board and the HPEA. Item 10 are various professional services, in some cases funded by the contractor or educational services department. Item 11 is a new out-of-district placement at CPC High Point School in Morganville, New Jersey, effective 5/15/2018. Item 12 are extended school year placements for the summer, which total $261,894.01, which is a 10.8% increase from last year. So it's quite significant.
Wow, really?
Item 13 is our resolution to award the custodial grounds and management services in the district to Atalian Global Services, which is TEMCO as we know them, TEMCO. They changed the name or merged or purchased.
But I think, wasn't, didn't their name change again, Linda? Isn't there a third name change?
Yes, we received notice, nothing formal as far as letterhead or contracts yet. They're now Servest. So I think it's Servest Atalian.
What's it called, Servest?
Servest.
That's because nobody could pronounce the middle name.
This is like a branding debacle, though, you know, like...
I don't think they can pronounce it.
And it's a five-year contract we're signing with them.
Whatever their name may be.
And that went out to, that went out to a formal bid process.
No, RFP. Not bids.
Oh, it's not bid?
No. RFP, Repressive Proposal of Competitive Contracting.
I got that wrong last time, too. Sorry. Number 14 is a contract to Architects, so CAA Architects of Newark, for architectural design services for the redesign of the main entry at a Bartle School.
Why is it being redesigned?
For, for safety purposes. A glass, glass wool is being put in.
Because Bartle is, is it the, no, so Bartle and the high school are the two buildings where you open the door and you're in, as opposed to here, the middle school where you have a vest...
Vestibule.
No, 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 I know, but...
The high school, there's a wooden door.
Oh, there is the double door, but they're the wooden doors. Right, it's to make those glass doors. Sorry, my bad. So, right, so Bartle is now the only one where you go in once at a doors and you're in the building, so the idea is to do that double entry.
Okay.
And then item 15 is a one-to-one aid for a student in an already out-of-district school to the end of this school year. And that's the full finance.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mark. I do have one question. Do, do we know if to do, even just to do the sidebar agreement, are we going to have to do that doctrine of necessity thing that we have to do when we do the contract? Because we have so many board members that are conflicted.
Hmm. I can ask Jonathan tomorrow.
Yeah. I think we may.
We probably do.
I think we have to do our doctrine of necessity. Plus, I just like doing it because I like saying doctrine of necessity. It sounds so important, like we're doing this really fancy, fancy thing. We will now invoke the doctrine of necessity.
So number 14 is just the architectural services, it's not the cost of the...
Correct.
Is there a requirement that we do this, or is it just...
Years of requests and best practice.
And I think the safety committee had talked about it, and we heard about it at the open meeting, more safety for the entryways to the buildings.
And are we...
And it's budgeted for next year.
Are we, and we're maintaining it at the existing entry as we have it now?
Mm-hmm.
And is that entry handicap accessible in any way, other than coming in from the back?
No, the front.
There's a ramp.
Is there a ramp at that?
The front, no.
The, no.
The front entrance has a handicapped door. It's not the same door as the set of glass doors. It's, there's a parking spot with the door and a buzzer there.
It's like two doors down.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any ability to look at whether or not that door still makes sense as the main entrance, considering it's not handicap accessible?
Right, and parents struggle with strollers sometimes, I see, getting up those stairs.
Yeah, if we are, if we are looking at it, investing in it, and doing this work, it might not be the right entrance.
Well, the challenge we're running to is the main office location.
It's the office location, yes.
It's a long walk from that other entrance, for security reasons, to the main entrance.
I wish they'd been doing that.
Could, I thought we, I'm obviously wrong, but I thought we had one. Maybe we could consider looking into it.
Or have the architects price it up.
A ramp for the...
Yeah, for that entrance.
Makes sense at this point.
It's a good idea.
Then you could have your board meetings.
No, that's a separate issue. Then there's an issue with the actual auditorium.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
So you'll look into that? Linda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from Mark on finance? No? Okay. If not, Judy?
I'm up.
Personnel?
Okay. Alrighty. We did have our meeting, and we've been very busy for the month of May completing the interviews for the assistant principals in both the high school and middle school. So we'll talk about that more when we get to the agenda item. We also talked about the positions that we have filled. We filled the LDTC position, which was really very encouraging because we had a lot of problems last time, and, but we are still looking for a gifted and talented teacher. We also worked on, Scott presented us with the job description for the school safety specialist, so the personnel committee gave feedback on that, so we have that on the agenda as well. And, oh, speaking of TEMCO, the facility director for the company formerly known as TEMCO will now be...
It's going to be a symbol now.
A district employee, so that's also on the agenda. Okay, so as far as the agenda items, we have some building transfers. So, let's see, the transfer of the administrative secretary, Linda Moran, from Central Office to Irving Primary. Number three is the transfer of administrative secretary Angela Dawes from Irving to Bartle. Four is the elementary teacher Renee Dubra from Irving to Bartle. An elementary teacher from Bartle to Irving, number five. Number six is a resolution to approve withholding the salary increment of employee 4659 for the 2018-19 school year. Number seven is the same for employee 4072. Number eight is a resignation of Austin Muriel, paraprofessional lunch aid at Irving Primary School. And number nine is the approval of the new, a newly hired assistant principal at the high school, Keisha Golden Cooper, and Scott is going to tell us a little bit about her.
Sure. Keisha will be here on the 11th to introduce herself. And I have to tell you, I talked to both her immediate supervisors, and the consensus was she's a rock star. They were both very, they both said they were teary-eyed when she approached them and said she's, she's going to be leaving. She's currently at West Orange High School. Hayden Moore, the principal of the school, came right out and said she's a rock star, to be honest with you. She's firm but fair. She goes from the counseling end, since she's currently a guidance counselor, so she has, quote-unquote, "that way" about her, to get kids and parents to be in a better place. Cheryl Butler, her director of student personnel services and guidance in West Orange, started right out of the gate saying, "I didn't want to get this call." When I tell you, outstanding person. She has been a tremendous asset to our school counseling program, and more specifically for our student assistance counseling program. She's outstanding. She's a gem. She's been one who has helped me take our program from a program that was reactive and developed a program that's proactive. She's the go-to person. She's the leader of the guidance programs. She's a natural, that's, natural next step. A reminder, she was selected among over 200 applicants, whittled that number down to roughly 30, 10 who were interviewed, three who were interviewed in another round, and then two finalists who met with me. So she went through the rigor.
Yes.
Rigor and rigor. Thank you.
Yes, we're super excited. We're really, really happy to be welcoming her aboard. So unfortunately, number nine, we thought we had.
Number 10.
10, rather.
Number 10, we do have number nine.
Yes, number 10, I'm sorry. We have number nine, yes, no, we definitely have number nine. So the problem with the assistant principal position at the middle school, it's a challenge because it is only temporary. It's starting at a difficult time of year, and we really are looking for someone who can hit the ground running. So to find all of those things, we had chosen someone, but unfortunately, that candidate took her name, withdrew her, her name. So we're going to continue with some other options, and hopefully next week I'll have something to report. Number 11 is the new learning disabilities teaching consultant for the district, Charlene Silva. And Scott, did you have anything you wanted to?
I spoke to Marlene Rosenblum, who is an LDTC, and currently Charlene's mentor. This will be Charlene's first LDTC position. She's currently taking part in her clinical experience at Plainfield. Charlene is just wonderful, Marlene said. She's a self-starter, professional, thorough, she's no-nonsense while still being polite and pleasant. Very independent. She, she has all the skill sets. She knows how to prioritize responsibilities, plans out her schedule. She keeps things from interfering with one another and still manages to be very ahead of herself and ahead of her work. So she's able to be, I'll use the word again, proactive. So we're very excited. Charlene was chosen from, among five candidates, and she'll be serving the Irving and Bartle students with IUPs.
Okay. Great, thank you. Let's see. Number 12 is a resolution to approve a breakfast para, Andrew, I cannot pronounce the last name, Behringer. Okay, and let's see. 13 is the approval of a job coach para at the high school, Josephine Rugiero. 14 is what I spoke about before. This is the job safety professional job description. 15 is a request for medical leave from employee 0821. We also have number 16, a child care leave extension for employee 0067. 17, childcare leave for employee 0813 from October 1st till March 29th, 2019. We have a resolution to approve salary-funded federal grant for Audrey Zodoty. And then 19 is pretty straightforward. It's just the before, approving the before-after school program staff, the people listed, goes on for a couple of pages. We have 20, the summer secretary subs. Then 21, Joseph Campos has received his master's, right? And so here we will move up on the step. We have some student interns for the school-based youth service program, number 22. And then we have teacher coordinators, number 23, for the Title I Summer Holistic Intervention Program, SHIP. This is going on for a lot of pages. Bear with me. Then we have all of the teachers and subs for SHIP listed on number 24. And then number 25 is the Title I Summer Kindergarten Transition Program Appointments. 26 is, let's see, immigrant teacher for the, the SHIP program for yoga, art, and science. 27, summer ESL program, running from July 9th through August 9th. 28, resolution to approve summer hours for Jennifer Knapp. And then we have some more staff that receive some, some summer hours on number 29. Those are all listed. 30, oh, teachers or subs for the summer algebra program. This is endless. Curriculum writing hours, number 31. 32, summer cricket, more summer curriculum writing hours, that goes on and on and on. 33, the staff for the 2018 Extended School Year. Number 40, oh, the Child Study Team Hours for the summer. And then 35 is additional summer hours for DeeDee Deecher, the supervisor of educational services. 36 is the resolution to approve compensation to the following staff for professional development in district workshops, which are to be held during school hours. That's listed below. 37 is, we're approving a Source for Teacher Substitute for the ESY program. 38 is the resolution to approve Title I Non-Public Tutoring Teacher. And lastly, approving 1.5 hours for a para at Bartle to be paid at her contracted rate for special ed student. End act complete. Yay!
It's the time of year for personnel agendas. Does anybody have any questions for Judy?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Number 32 on the curriculum writing hours. Is that lined up with our current curriculum review where we're at?
Correct, the five-year revision cycle.
The five-year revision cycle.
The only, well, one of the, I think it's one of the two changes. We're giving hours to some of our grade-level leaders to write supplemental packets to include Amistad and genocide education in our social studies and ELA curricula.
Okay.
That wasn't planned for. It's been budgeted but not planned for in our cycle.
Okay.
Sorry, going back to, was it number nine, the assistant principal position? I was just, you know, from what I was able to look at and lining that up against like the job description, I saw a lot that was based on, like, in terms of one or two areas of the job description. But I'm just wondering, did you get good input on her ability for like the, the scheduling, the extracurricular activities, like all the other aspects of an assistant principal position?
As delegated by the principal. There's that one last description role. I'll pull it up, but we, it's what Caitlin Brady is currently doing. We expect that the new assistant principal would do it as well.
Okay, and do you think, like, there's some really stellar things on her resume, which are awesome, but I just wanted to make sure that it's like, that there's a full package there in terms of her ability and all the other...
Wait till you meet her.
Hmm?
Wait till you meet her.
Oh, okay.
You'll have zero, zero, zero doubt in her ability to take on any task. She sets her mind to. She's amazing.
We were practically jumping up and down.
Yes.
Mr. Laster is going to be stepping away from evaluating coaches, and he was hoping for someone who could pick up that ball.
It's like, it's utterly bizarre, the number of boxes that you... It doesn't even make sense. I mean, like, down to the fact that, like, the lingering resentment of having lost a sack, and then this person comes in and she's sacked.
Mr. Laster had his list.
It's like, it's crazy, the things that she brings to the table.
And I see that she's not starting until September 1st.
I think we have her for July...
Well, her benefits are effective.
One, because she'll be working during the summer.
Oh, the benefits are, okay, so she, because it's a 10-month administrator, but I thought it, I thought that position was a 12-month position.
No, the assistant principal, SHIP's a 10-month position, but we do provide up to 20 days of additional work in the summer.
Okay, maybe it's just something I misread in the job description. Okay.
Part of her work will be to be trained, restored practices, handle with care and other, we have to get her up to speed, basically, on all those things that we've incorporated to the program.
Okay.
And the even wackier thing is that she happens to know the person that we have in mind for the job position that I can't ever remember the name of.
School specialist, school safety specialist.
It's like, it's just wacky.
There's a four-day intensive workshop on restored practices that our internal teachers took, got involved in when they decided to be the leaders on RP in August in New York. And it looks like Officer Cabello, the new assistant principal, and whoever the school safety person is, will go together to take part in this workshop. Officer Cabello, just because he wants to, he feels like he's in the community, he wants to know more about what we're doing with RP.
Is the school safety person the same thing that used to be called the youth development coordinator?
Yes, it is.
Scott, too.
Just wanted to confirm.
And student... And soon, this will be a symbol too, like it'll be like Prince, we'll just like refer to it by a symbol.
I do have to clarify that, you might not even realize this, Starzy, but the name was actually changed since the Personnel Committee met, from Youth Safety Specialist to Youth Safety Professional. And the reason for that is, when we consulted our board attorney, he reminded us that there is actually a state mandated position, which was Brady holds, because we approved her as such, called the Youth Safety Specialist. And that's a separate position, separate responsibility, so we took the title.
And the job description says School Safety Support, is the title.
On the job description?
Yeah, well, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how exactly it's formatted or whatever, but it's.
Then that's a typo, we have to change it to School.
We'll make sure everything matches, right? Before it's on the next agenda, we'll have.
Good catch, Julia.
You did say that.
Or we'll just call it Security Guard, like, students are calling it.
That the job description, a lot of the material for the job description came from the community meeting, if you want.
Yes, I thank you for pointing that. I want to make it known that all the information we collected from the roughly 80 people who came April 24th to help us craft this role, we took and shared with the District Safety Committee meeting, Safety Committee, and then again with the Personnel Committee. So that information was directly put into the, into the job description.
And this position is going to be just the high school?
Correct.
Next year, is there going to be some kind of introduction of them to the student body? Like, are they going to be, it's like during the welcoming speech that Mr. Laster always gives or something, are they going to be able to explain like what, why they're there instead of, so that there isn't any kind of like stigma around it? Or is it, are they just going to be kind of like thrown into them from the high school?
We've talked about trying, and it could work out this way, to actually have this person come, but he or she selected before school's out, to have a formal introduction to the underclassmen. And then, of course, a more formal introduction September. Yeah, we recognize that, we have to, people are going to see this person walking around the building, wondering what the heck he's doing. Although.
Yeah, I just, I think there's a lot of misinformation among the student body with what the position is entailing, so yeah, I think that we need to.
Feel free to spread the job description around, so they.
We'll print out a couple and throw them around. No, I think it's, I mean, Liv and I have both been clarifying to people, like, this is not, like, the person's not going to be like carrying a weapon, they're not in uniform, you know, but there still is concern and we don't reach everybody, so.
Good point.
Great. Anything else for, where were we? Judy?
Nope.
Oh, one thing, when are we looking to officially hire the youth?
I'm sorry?
When are we hoping to have that position filled, the Youth Safety Professional?
Oh, I'd like to post the position June 12th, which is the day after the board would presumably approve the job description, for five days, so the position will be posted for five days on the district website and internally. And then bring that person to the board July.
Okay, great.
The 14th, I think, is our July meeting, whichever that one meeting is in July.
Awesome. Okay, um, why don't we switch gears to you guys, if you're, do you have a student report tonight, or?
We have a very minimal one, so we can offer a couple of tickets.
That's okay.
We're good with that.
It's, Liv, do you want to do it?
Yes, so, yeah, I'm going to be at a college orientation next week, so this is my last chance.
So this is it!
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all of you for accepting me and bringing us both into this, it's been a really, really interesting experience. We both do Model UN and we get to see big government all the time. It's been really interesting to see, have this experience and get to sit and see what local government really looks like, so it's been a very interesting experience. Thank you, before we get into what's been happening in the schools. So we don't have any reports from any of the other schools, but we do have a couple of things from the high school. So the first thing is that RP had a science fair, some of the fifth grade classes came.
Oh, I love that.
Yeah, to end up, all of the AEP science classes participated in it. I believe it was like their final projects that they do after AEP testing, so that was really fun. I heard it was a resounding success.
No, there's four things, so make-up part testing.
And then we also have, we also had make-up part testing last week.
And today too.
And, yeah, today, people have been sort of gradually making up their testing, but I know that it's going quicker, I think, than was expected, which is great. We had a lot of test disrupts sort of in the middle of May, and it's kind of nice that people are sort of getting out of the groove of test-taking and back into sort of their final projects and wrapping up classes.
And then, oh, and then we're asking one acts is going on, which is part of the Island Park Drama Department, which is student-directed, student-led, student-written, like performances that they put on in the high school entourage, so that's happening tonight.
Oh, cool.
Oh, and then senior trip was last week. We went on the boat cruise on Thursday night, and then on Friday we spent the day in Jordy Park, and it was a resounding success. We had, we both had a lot of fun, definitely. And even though it was overcast during the cruise, it made great lighting for photos.
A silver lining. Do you guys have any info on reps for process for next year, or?
So tomorrow, the next day, the next day, for the rest of the week, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, we're going to be holding interviews. We actually have 12 applicants this year.
Wow.
Yeah.
I think there were three last year.
We also wanted to do it last year, and so we're hoping for some really great people that will bring to you, I think, next week, actually.
That's pretty awesome. So what's the process? Like, what's?
Yeah, there's a form. There's an application that they have to fill out, that we passed out to everybody in the school, predominantly junior, rising seniors. And then after that, the Student Congress Advisors will set up interviews times with them, and then us and the Student Congress Advisors, they go through an interview process. I believe they submit a resume too, but.
Yeah, so they just, I mean, they ask a lot about your past involvement in the schools and how you're looking to be involved as a member of the board, because obviously the kind of involvement you have shifts a little bit, to talk about certain things that you think the student has to offer, kind of new innovative ways that students can sort of present the general student perspective, because that's not always the easiest thing to do, so that's sort of the focus of both the application and the interview.
Cool.
I just want to put this idea out there, clearly not for this year, but for future years. I sent this to Dr. Taylor this morning, or last night, I don't remember. I just happened to catch that somebody I know who is in the Newark Public Schools, they actually put students up for a vote. It's kind of cool. Check, I'll send you guys the link.
I'll put it up on the monitor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a great idea. So the students like kind of do the same thing, they do a bio, and they give a, like a personal quote, and their pictures go up, and then you get to.
The whole school votes?
Yeah, the whole district. Because, I mean, in Newark, they have.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Can I text it to you?
Or email, whichever.
Well, it's in your email.
Yeah.
It's in those emails that we were going back and forth with today.
Yeah, looking for it.
I just thought it would be this like, kind of really interesting way to, to go about it. Can you find it in there?
I'll get it, okay.
Don't worry about it. It's all right.
Sorry.
So anyway, just something, so right now Andre Ferreira is leading with 628 votes.
Wow.
It's a big, kind of like checking it all day long, is like, it keeps kind of like vacillating, and so far, so far in second is Amanda Ponza, who's got 315, so.
There it is.
There it is. So there's like a whole page on the district's website, and the kids go up, and you can go and you can see their quotes and read their bios.
That's a very fair way to do that, I like that.
Isn't that really?
Right, I think that's great. I mean, obviously it takes a kind of commitment to actually understanding the candidates, which we don't even have with our student government, like, quite frankly, like, people give a speech or whatever, but it's really hard to get a feel for that. It's in an assembly setting, some people don't take it seriously, so this is really a very professional way of kind of approaching that.
Yeah, I thought it was really interesting, I was curious what you guys would think of it. I just, I was really struck by it, you know, like, I mean, so the kids who apply, like, they've got to be like really serious, you know? I mean, not that anybody who would apply this way wouldn't be serious, but, you know, they know they're going up on the website, they've got to put these materials out, they're going to be put out publicly, like, it's, it kind of does kind of take it to a, you know, to the next level.
And they even have a debate.
Yeah.
Which you can listen to.
We don't have space for anything.
Well, Newark is the largest school district in the state, so there's some more resources.
Maybe a little bit.
So, anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there, thought it was kind of cool.
So Julia, you'll be here next week, right?
I will be here on the 11th.
You will. Okay, Olivia, this is it.
Yes.
And I have something I want to share with you.
Oh, thank you.
And you're going to take your plate with you, not the plate, just the, the name.
Good name.
We need the plate. And how about a picture?
Okay.
And I'm going to take my sling off for you.
Are you sure about that?
Don't take your sling off.
Listen to Mark, don't take it.
Don't do that.
Don't look professional like you're having sex.
It's all a big lie, I don't mind.
Yeah, really, I've just been milking it.
You're just, you're just been milking it, you know, so your kids will deliver your lunch and dinner over to the table.
I will for this time. Look, you're all dressed up.
You shouldn't do that. You should keep it in your sleeve. My sunburn, my sunburn is coming off.
So wait, did you tell us where you're going?
No, I was like, we're actually going to be like 15.
30 minutes away?
Yeah. A couple miles away from each other. I'm going to George Washington University.
Oh.
And I'll be at Georgetown, so.
Excellent.
And we're both in there like IRs.
All the kids in DC.
Blasting.
That is really great.
Be with all the cool DC kids, I like it. All right. Well, thank you guys for everything. All right, so I guess we're going back to policies, and we don't have Ann here, so Scott, you were just going to kind of walk us through.
Oh, I think Mark said you.
Oh, is Mark going to do it?
I offered to do it, and I can.
All right, then.
However, I could not find the markup changes, so I have the policies as amended and as reviewed by Keith Presti and perhaps his team, but I can describe some of the notes that, briefly, that Ann sent. So the 3282, which is the use of social networking sites by teaching staff, and 4282, use of social networking sites by support staff, we're amending them to make them consistent with the changes we made in 3281 and 3283, which were, those changes were much more specific, these are much more general. But again, I don't have the specific changes. Scott, do you know what the specific changes were?
Yeah, I'm going to pull them up for you. One second.
I found the finals, but I did not find markups.
Do you want to continue while I look through that policy?
So then 4281 and 4283, those are inappropriate, and I think it should say support staff conduct for 4281, and 4283 is electronic communications between support staff members and students. These are more specific policies, and these were made consistent with the policies that we, that we approved for teaching staff.
In the 3000s, yeah.
3281 and 3283. And these have more specific, specific items reviewed. As an example, let me find one. Right, so as an example, in the previous versions, it didn't say, "Staff members are advised to be concerned with staff and communication which may include, but not limited to, communication and/or publication using email, text messaging, social network sites, and any other medium that is direct and available to students or for public display." So it's, it's more specific wording on the, or changed wording, better wording, on the, on the specific types of messaging that you could make, as an example. But again, I don't have the changes to those either, unfortunately. And Scott, you're still looking?
Yeah, well, I've got the, I've got the social networking policy up first, so.
Okay.
Are you finished with the notes?
Yeah, those are the notes from Ann, but I, again, didn't find the markup copies.
Is it just adding what's in bold print? I mean, I think that's the only change.
Well, I noticed.
To 4282?
I noticed that of all the policies, social, the social network policy didn't include a couple of other changes that we made.
Oh, really?
They're all mechanical, so there wasn't a lot of content change. So for instance, on, for policy 3282, on the first page towards the bottom.
Oh, it's here, I'm sorry. I was looking online, I didn't look at what we had in handouts. I looked online before I left home.
But again, I think 3282 didn't show, didn't have the change show up on the paper copy, so, but there, a handful of words we changed on the first page of page 32, of policy 3282 bottom. We, we added the words "their families" in that last paragraph. "It is important that a staff member's use of these sites does not damage the reputation of the school district, employees, pupils, or their families." And then we also added, in the next sentence, "staff members who utilize, post, or publish images, blah, blah, blah."
So I think it's fine, as long as we have all those for the next meeting, we just need to be able to have them for the, when we're actually voting on these for first reading.
All other changes still reflected on the paper copies, but I'll make sure that the social networking.
Okay.
Policies updated accordingly.
The idea was to make them match each other.
Yeah.
And be more consistent. I don't think there were major changes. The other one is the management of head lice, that's 8454. That's a new policy, and we've spent months discussing this. I can go over some specifics of the latest one that was handed out, of the thrust of what the committee wanted to accomplish. So, once a school nurse gets information that a student may have lice, the nurse has the discretion to examine the student. The student can go back and finish the day, but the parents get notified, and then it's up to the parents to take appropriate steps to manage the head lice. Before the student can come back the next day, the nurse has to confirm with the student's parents that the appropriate treatments have been completed. If the nurses, nurses can't confirm with this, with the treatment with the parents, the student can attend class that day, but the nurse or designee will make additional attempts to reach the parents. If the parents won't undertake treatment for the child, then the nurse will discuss with the social worker and try to assist in working with the family to ensure that the treatment occurs. And then if there's full refusal to treat the head lice, then the superintendent will be involved and, and work with the parents so that other students aren't constantly exposed. And then there's a list of items here. There'll be, each school in the district will make the policy available, the school nurses will compile a protocol for managing lice treatment and an information packet that'll go home to parents. The parents from pre-K through 7 will be provided for the, with the information packet at the beginning of the school year. School staff members will work to collaborate to assist families in managing lice, and, and so on. I mean, this goes on quite a long way. But the idea is not to stigmatize this, and I think that's really the bottom line, and also not keep children out of school. And that's what we wrestled with over and over, because there's a lot of choices in the state, the state guidelines for this policy. But we felt keeping the students in school and not stigmatizing kids and working with parents, because this, this is, this is not a life-threatening illness, we want the children to be in school as much as possible.
And I think the committee also focused a lot on education.
Right.
Education of the, for the parents, so they knew what the proper, you know, proper things to do and to look out at home, and, you know, to check their child on a regular basis. How do the teachers feel about this? Has anybody, is there any sort of feel about?
I don't know, did this one go through Keith?
Repeat the question.
Ruth was asking how the teachers feel about. Ruth was asking how the teachers feel about the policy.
It hasn't come to my attention that they feel one way or the other.
Has it gone to Keith?
And the nurses had a say in this policy. So they support the direction which we went. And of course, the school pediatrician, the school doctor was consulted. Dr. Brill, she's on board as well, the policy.
Well, we'll make sure that Keith sees it, so if there's any...
Yes, please.
I did project the protocol we're using internally. It's a good way to, if you want to look at it, it's a good way to summarize what will happen if. And so this is being utilized by all of our nurses. It's been updated since the policy was just drafted.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I did not read the policy thoroughly, but is there a procedure that other students are warned that they should check themselves? Because one of the biggest problems is that, or one of the biggest things that happens is that you get a mass text that says, "Hey, blah, 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 has lice, just FYI." That's still on the students or parents to do that, right? There's no...
Yeah.
There's no, like, "Hey, somebody in your class has lice," so all, okay.
Because that's actually not recommended by the school nurse associations. Because if you're in a classroom with, you know, you're a second grader and you're in a classroom with 20 kids, you might not ever come into contact with any of those 20 kids. The kid you're gonna give it to is the kid that you just had a sleepover with and the kid you just had a playdate with. So that's, those are who we have to have that parent contact. And that's a parental, you know, I think the district's job is to de-stigmatize and educate, so that we don't make parent, we make sure that parents don't feel like they can't tell other people, do you know what I mean? Because when it becomes such, you know, this, like, everybody in the classroom gets notified. I mean, you have HIP issues, you have all kinds of issues involved with that. So, yeah, so the direction is to de-stigmatize and to have, encourage parents to make those contacts to close friends and make sure other family members are checked. So my only question is, where we make the jump from? So the nurse isn't getting compliance from the parents, and then we refer it to a social worker, and then if the social worker isn't getting compliance, it jumps straight to you. Are we missing, I was wondering how you felt about that? Are we missing a step in there of notifying the principal? And seeing if the principal can intervene? Instead of going straight from a social worker to the superintendent? It seems like a...
Mark, if I recall, we thought the social worker would be the last stop because he or she is the one who would consider whether it needs to go outside, you know, beyond to the next level. But the principal was, it wasn't a building level issue, it was a bunch of, it might be a health-related issue?
I don't remember the specific discussion, but I do remember, I don't know how to say, appearing with the word superintendent in the policy. In other words, we, I don't recall the discussion of it, but I recall that, you know, after one meeting to the next, it did say from social worker to superintendent. And I would concur with Darcy, is this something that you feel comfortable with?
Yeah, I wouldn't have objections to the principal being involved. Yeah, I wonder if the committee felt I should come into play to reflect the Strauss-Eseme version of this policy, seriousness by which it's considering a situation with lice that keeps recurring. If you recall, Mark, we excluded language that would have the social worker contacting divots.
We did exclude that, we excluded a lot of stuff.
And so maybe we thought, all right, look, we're not gonna go overboard, but maybe we need to get somebody as high-profile as the superintendent involved.
I mean, I think it makes sense, and I don't think it's gonna be happening that frequently to make it a hardship on the...
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Well, the parents aren't going to address it.
Oh, you mean a parent saying they're not gonna treat their child?
Yeah, sure, I mean, if the, yeah, I mean, honestly, I think this is... Jeez, why is my phone making so much noise? I think the way it worked before, it actually made it easier for parents not to treat. Because if the check is just the nurse checking your head like this and then sending you back to class, a nurse can't possibly do a check that is gonna, to say whether a kid does or doesn't have lice. They just can't.
Right.
I mean, with, short of combing a kid out, you're never gonna potentially find everything. So if what we're asking for is actual treatment and confirmation of treatment, we're actually putting more of an onus on the families. Like, this is actually more stringent than what we've been doing. And, yeah, some families are not gonna do it. So if...
But we keep saying they can go back to class, they can go back to class, they can go...
Because you have to. I mean, how long are you gonna keep kids out of class for something?
Well, we're not keeping them out at all. We're saying, you know, the nurse is gonna check and, you know, and the nurse is going to advise families that they should, you know, stay abreast of this and treat it and whatever. But if the families don't, then the child goes back to class.
Right.
At no point is a child, you know, not going back into class. So if there's like a real heavy-duty case of head lice, the child is still in the classroom.
Right.
If the parents are saying, "I don't care," the child is still there.
Right, I mean, so the hopes is, the hope is that by, you know, then climbing the ladder of you're going from the nurse then to a social worker, then either straight to Scott or to a principal in between, that's somewhere in there that's gonna have some impact on that process, you know? I mean, I think it becomes increasingly harder to, you know, sit in front of additional people and refuse to get your children treatment.
Well, I suggest the policy committee, when it meets before Second Read, which could happen in July, discuss whether we want the principal involved. Something through that title.
I don't see why we wouldn't. I mean, I mean, think about this, in a bigger district in Newark, you're not going to the superintendent with kids with lice. I mean, you know, like, we would even conceive of that because we're a small district and, you know, we've only got four schools or whatever. But it's kind of a preposterous jump, if you think of it that way, that, you know, a parent would be meeting with, you know, Chris Surf because, you know, their kid's got lice, you know? I think it's perfectly appropriate, if the social worker's not getting anywhere, to...
Go to the principal.
Have the parents sit down with the principal. And then if they're not even listening to the principal, then sure, you know, then I think it would just come to you as a matter of course, but...
I have enough on my plate.
Yeah, no, exactly, you know? So, I mean, that was my only question. Overall, I think it's a big improvement. Because, I mean, the reality is that there's, you know, there were kids in class with lice today, you know? I mean, it's just a fact of life. I mean, anybody who works in an elementary school is not, you know, is not surprised by this and this whole idea that Highland Park has more than other places. I think it's...
Right, but it's really stressful for the, you know, parents and for the families and for the teachers. Because if a teacher doesn't necessarily know protocol for prevention of, you know, especially in a preschool classroom or kindergarten classroom, then the teacher's not going to be, the teacher's gonna have difficulty understanding how this is affecting his or her classroom and dealing with it properly.
Is there some sort of, like, PD we can have the nurses do for teachers? Particularly, you know?
Sure.
Lower grades? I mean, that would be a great PD, to just have, right?
Yeah.
Am I insane?
We could use the opportunity of this new policy being rolled out as our way to get going.
Yeah, I mean, and to get some, like, actual materials out into people's hands.
I don't think it would take, what, 15 minutes?
There are amazing materials out there that, you know, have flow charts and, you know, coloring books for kids and, I mean, I mean, no, I'm not even kidding. I mean, it's like, there's real materials out there to... But if you really do want to de-stigmatize it and make people feel just less freaked out about it, I mean, because when you do the whole classroom notification route and everything, I mean, there's all this, like, shame and whatever, like, it's... It is worse to send your kid to school with the 99.9 degree fever than it is to send your kid to school with the lice. And your kid sneezing all over people and coughing all over people. That puts a kid at far more risk than lice, you know? So, you know, people just need to get over it. So, okay. Anybody else have any questions about any of the policies?
On 4283, I went through it and I was pretty much happy with it, but there's a number of little, like, typos and things in the wrong place. So I think it'd probably be easier rather than talking about them here.
Just go straight to Ann.
Just send it to Ann.
Absolutely.
I'm emailing her right now about the lice policy.
She's probably watching.
Okay, I hope she's not. And, okay, so if nobody has anything else on policy, nope. Monique's not here to give the Equity and Excellence Report, and you guys did meet, I think.
We did meet, but I think...
And Monique's gonna give the report at the next meeting.
I think she has a, she will have a full report.
She does, yep.
An important meeting.
Yep. But she was away for the weekend celebrating her son's graduation. Congratulations, Amiri. So we will hopefully see her next week. So that brings us to public comment. Kim, got anything for us? You got nothing? Okay, then I'm gonna keep going. So, my president's report, New Jersey Department of Education Park Forum, June 13, 2018. So...
That sounds really...
Huh?
That sounds so exciting.
Doesn't it sound exciting? You guys wanna come, don't you?
Yep.
Oh, yes.
They better be serving cookies at that one.
Oh, Scott, cookies, we need cookies. So, this is the deal with that. So, obviously, park has been a big issue for, what, how many years now? Three years? First, third, three, four, five, six? No, four years. This is the fourth year of park. How is that even possible?
That's true, it was first implemented when we were freshmen, so...
Yeah, and when my girls were in third grade, I remember when they started talking about it, you know, years before that, thinking, "Oh, my goodness, the first year this thing is rolled out, it's the first year my daughters would have to do state mandated testing." I'm like, "Yeah, that's not happening." So, yeah, this is our fourth year with park. Most states have dropped out of the park consortium at this point. I think we're one of five states that are still giving this test and despite a governor who was elected that said in day one he was gonna get rid of park. Here we are on day way past one. And you, you know, all our kids are finishing up taking their park exam. So, so much for campaign promises. So what is happening is Governor Murphy's Acting Commissioner, Ramon Repalet, and his Department of Education are going around the state and they're collecting feedback from districts. And while, you know, I'm certainly appreciative of the opportunity to provide feedback again, I think a lot of people who've been engaged in this fight for the last four years feel like we've been there, done that. And there have been multiple forums across the state over the last four years where we've discussed the multitudinous problems with park and discussed what we'd like to see instead. But here we go again. So if we're gonna have a little bit more of a dog and pony show, then why not? Bring it to Highland Park. So, when I found out that these meetings were happening through my friends and colleagues in Savour Schools, New Jersey, I threw our hat in the ring as a potential site to host one of these meetings, and we got to host two meetings. So, on June 13, we're gonna have two separate meetings. So there are two different meetings that the DOE is hosting in this tour that they're doing in the state. One that they're calling "community meetings" and one that they're calling "collaborative meetings." We're hosting one of each meeting. So the meeting, we'll have one meeting from 1:30 to 2:30 in the High School Media Center. That is the community meeting. And we're actually the host of that meeting. So Dr. Taylor and I are considered the official hosts for that meeting, and we can invite between about 25, 30 people to attend that meeting. That will also be attended by Department of Education staff. We're trying to get the commissioner to come and sit with us, but not sure if that's gonna happen. And, you know, obviously, we want a mix of folks there with us. Board members, students, parents, teachers.
When is it again?
June 13.
Right.
Which is next, what?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, from 1:30 to 2:30.
Okay, so it's actually during the last period of school.
Sounds right.
High school, okay.
I asked Mr. Lasseter to identify some students, but if you guys are interested because of your involvement here, I don't think it'd be a problem if we bring out board.
I won't be here. I will, I probably don't have anything.
I'll let Mr. Lasseter hear all.
Make it happen.
I have a lot of electives in the afternoon. So I'll write it down, I'll see what I can do, I'll talk to Mr. Lasseter.
Okay.
So we've already reached out to some parents, we'll send out formal invitations. I've reached out to Senator Deignan as well. I thought he'd be really interesting to have there since he's so strong on education issues and he's been, you know, he's been working on this for years as well, although I haven't heard back from his chief of staff. So we will see on that one. And then the second meeting is same day, from 4 to 6. And that one is going to be here, in the middle school cafeteria, right? And that one, we don't host. That one is the collaborative. And that one, the DOE is the actual host, they run the meeting. And we don't get to invite people. The DOE, when they first came up with this idea, they opened up this call for people to come and talk to them, thinking they'd get maybe a few hundred people who were interested, and then they got over 2,500 people who were interested. So then they were scrambling for sites all over the state, North Jersey, Central Jersey, and South Jersey to accommodate this many people. So that meeting will be for those people, those original 2,500 people who signed up. And apparently ours filled up, like, immediately, so it's already full. And, but I have heard that some of the meetings, while they were fully signed up, then, you know, never as many people show up as sign up. So I may work with the DOE folks to see if maybe we can have, like, a waiting list or something. I don't know. Or, you know, some people come and see if they can get in, if not all the people who sign up come, if more people want to come and participate. So those are the two meetings that we have set up on the 13th. Scott and I are talking about doing a kind of quick survey as well. There's three questions that the DOE is posing at these meetings, basically asking, like, why do we assess? What do we do with the information we get from assessments? And what should we do differently moving forward? So we thought we'd put those questions out, just kind of generally to students, staff, parents, community members, anybody who wants to fill those out. And, you know, maybe throw a couple of additional questions out there as well and then have that additional information to present to the Department of Education. So I will, what I'm gonna do before the meetings is I'm gonna compile all the work that we did a couple of years back on all the graduation requirement stuff, because obviously that's such a big piece of this. So our board resolution, our delegate assembly resolution, I will present all of that to the department and say, hey, you know, boards across the state agree with us, this should not be the way we hand out diplomas. This shouldn't be, you know, the gateway test to getting a high school diploma in New Jersey. So I'll make sure that they're made well aware of that. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay, so I think that about covers it. If anybody who's watching at home now or in the next week, once this hits online or HPTV, feel free to reach out either to myself or Dr. Taylor, our emails are on the website. If you're interested in the earlier June 13 meeting, and we'll see what we can do. Does anybody have any questions about the meetings or...
Yeah, how many people can we host in the first meeting?
Like, 25 to 30.
And then the second, that's in this room?
The second is in this room, and I think they cap them at like 50 to 60. So we should have more than enough. And the idea was to break people, folks up into smaller groups and discuss particular questions, so...
The board will receive a formal invitation from us. Probably in the mail by tomorrow, if not tomorrow, Wednesday.
For the first one.
Correct.
Yeah. All right. Okay, does anybody have anything they wanna talk about for old business? Nope? Okay, we have one item on the agenda for new business that Dr. Taylor's gonna talk about.
The leadership team is going to begin a book study around a book that Dr. Ann Gregory recommended. We look at titled "Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain: Promoting Authentic Engagement and Rigor Among Culturally and Linguistically Diverse Students." Ann thought it was a good way for us to see how our work to move towards restorative practices parallels what we're also working on doing, and that's to promote cultural responsiveness. So Darcy and I thought it would be a good idea to have the board also study the book alongside the leadership team's work.
Summer reading, folks.
If you're all in. I already have copies of the book.
Wait, did the librarian just give me side eye? Did I just get a side eye from the librarian on the board? I don't believe it.
Look it up, it's light summer reading.
I was gonna say, it's now on the New York Times Bestseller List, that's for sure.
But it's on Dr. Gregory's bestseller list.
Unbelievable.
So...
Do you have copies for us?
I do, I actually have copies for you to give out next week. Leadership team will kick off, the leadership team will kick off its work July 11 at our retreat. And we can discuss how, we might even be able to get the leadership team and the board together to have a larger discussion.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yes, it would.
What do you think?
All in.
All in.
How many pages is this book?
How many pages? Are there Cliff Notes?
Is there a Cliff Notes version?
Not illustrated.
How large is the print?
Is Fiona baking cupcakes?
I will absolutely make sure that there are cupcakes baked. But I will, that, check, that's done.
We have to pass a special bar test on this one.
All right, sounds okay to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, does anybody else have anything for new business? Nope. All right, Kim? You got nothing? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.